Uh, two years ago about we adopted that or the county board adopted that policy. Since then, I guess even before that, for turn lanes, we've generally followed mid dot guidance. Maybe it's national guidance as well as when left and right turn lanes should be installed. I think in the past, right turn lanes, if you had any project kind of by default were put in, again, kind of following what mid dot stance was. So for developments in particular, we just wanted to have some written guidance to hand off to developers, engineers to say, hey, you're gonna need, need to evaluate your intersection, but you're approved for an intersection for their policy, but this is what you need to do for that intersection that you want to build on our county highway. So that's the main thing. We're gonna use it for our own county highway projects that we lead to so that we're consistently doing it. And it'll help, I think, refine or maybe save some costs in the long run too, maybe where we're installing longer turn lanes we need, or maybe don't need them at all, maybe just need a pay shoulder and that's good enough for these lower access points. So, so Whitney's gonna walk through PowerPoints. It's gonna be some riveting stuff. So I hope at the end you're gonna learn all about turn, how you design turn lane lengths. We're gonna talk about turn lane offsets. So that's something new. So I'll turn over to Whitney and feel free to stop her along the way if you have questions or we can wait till the end too. She has some, some actual real life examples that we can show too that I think you'll find interesting. So that'll turn over to Whitney.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Whitney.
Hi, I'm Whitney Schroder. As Darren mentioned, I'm traffic engineer here at Carver County. So I'm gonna walk you through the developing process. We'll talk about the criteria for the turn lane warrants as well as the, the turn lane length design. And then we'll also talk about left turn lane offset and get into some examples. And as Darren mentioned, if you have any questions or comments, feel free to jump right in. Happy to make this a conversation and not just a presentation. So as Darren mentioned, historically, the county's approach to turn lanes has generally been to follow MINDOT's access management guidelines as well as their turn lane design typicals. The issue we were running into with this is that it's sort of a one size fits all approach. And it really wasn't scaled to meet the needs of our county. A lot of our roadways either have lower speeds or lower volumes that don't necessarily match the types of roads that MINDOT's policies were tailored to. Another issue we ran into was depending on the traffic operations analysis to solely determine whether turn lanes should be required. This definitely came into a play a lot with, um, working with developers. As part of their requirements, they have to do a traffic impact analysis or a traffic operations report. And a lot of times their consultants that do these analysis, they will use different assumptions that vary from consultant to consultant, consultant to consultant. Also, a lot of times if the level of service of an intersection is level of service D or better, they will then say that turn lanes are not recommended. And the issue with this is it's really not taking into account safety. And so a lot of these developments are being built on rural highways. And we're introducing new access points, new conflicts, and you have that speed differential between vehicles that the traffic operations analysis solely just doesn't really capture all of that. And so the goal with this turn lane policy is to capture that proactive safety approach and also provide the framework for ensuring that the turn lanes in the county, the turn lanes in the county are implemented in a uniform and consistent manner and also have consistent design standards. So when is this policy applicable? As you can see, pretty much always, um, the only types of projects you might not see on here are seal coat projects and projects of that nature. We are going to be using the 20 year projected traffic volumes for a lot of the volume warrants and thresholds. This is consistent with new construction. Developments will be slightly different. You see those will be based on opening year traffic as well as the 20 year full year build out. And the reason for that is by providing that opening year and the full year build out, it gives us the ability to kind of plan and come up with interim solutions and identify any trigger points as to when those turn lanes might be warranted, if they're not warranted the opening year. Safety related treatments, those will be based on current traffic volumes.
Whitney, if I could, so other, other projects that wouldn't be included or we're just doing a straight resurfacing project, so middle and overlay type project, we wouldn't necessarily apply this turn lane policy unless there are some safety issues that we felt we wanted to incorporate into the scope of that project.
So as far as the policy guidance, this kind of summarizes the approach. So if a turn lane warrant is met and there's not already an existing turn lane, then the recommended, recommendation will be that a new turn lane should be added. If the warrant is met and a turn lane already exists, but it doesn't meet our new design standards, then the turn lane should be recommended to be modified to meet those standards if, if that's feasible. If turn lanes already exist, but they do not meet warrants, this is where traffic engineering study should be conducted to determine the impacts of the intersection if the turn lane is removed. As you all know, once a turn lane is installed, it's very hard to remove them. So if it does not meet warrants, this is where the county would have the final say as to whether it should remain or if it should be removed. So there are a lot of factors that go into the turn lane warrants. Just to name a few, there's truck percentages, terrain, crash history, um, traffic volumes. And so to try to simplify this process, we felt the easiest way to convey the message was to utilize flow charts and then charts and tables as much as possible. The volume thresholds are based on professional industry publications. So this includes the Ash To Green Book, um, if you are familiar with that, the Highway Capacity Manual. We also referenced MINDOT policy guidelines, North Dakota DOT guidelines, Florida DOT, and then Washington County as well. They are in the process of, of developing their own turn lane policy. And so we coordinated with them and they had very similar approach to their policy as ours. So starting with the left turn lane warrant, the criteria is really based on intersection control, speed, lane configuration, so two lane versus four lane, and then your volumes of turning vehicles and your volumes of your main line opposing vehicles. We based our thresholds on hourly volumes. This was something we kind of went back and forth with. We initially had used daily volumes. And the reasoning for that was because it was just easier to understand. So if we have a daily volume of 50 vehicles, turning vehicles per day, it was a lot easier to look at the graph and see where it lies. But the problem that we were running into when working with developers is that a lot of their traffic analysis is always based on peak hour analysis. And so having that daily requirement kind of involved a lot more back and forth with the developers and it just wasn't as efficient. So we changed it to hourly thresholds because that seemed like it'd be more efficient to use the data that they already had analyzed and provided. So based on intersection control, we split it up between uncontrolled intersections and then controlled intersections. So uncontrolled intersection, that would be your two-way stop control. So your main line is not controlled. And we split it up based on speed. So 50 miles per hour and higher would be considered a high speed roadway and 45 miles per hour would be considered a low, and lower would be considered a low speed roadway. And this is consistent with MINDOT's facility design guide and how they characterize high speed and low speed roadways. So we looked at the turn lane or turning movement volume. And you can see there are some of the thresholds and the relationship to the opposing through lane volumes. And just for reference, um, when you see 100 vehicles per lane, that would be equivalent to about 2,000 vehicles per day, that relationship there. So if it's 50 miles per hour or over for an uncontrolled intersection, you would look at these charts. If your point, based on your data, falls in the blue section, then the turn lane would be warranted. The left turn lane would be warranted. If it falls in the white section, then you would have to do some type of engineering study and look at crash history, your volume capacity and look at your existing lane configuration to determine if one should be there even though it's not considered warranted based on these charts. And one other thing I wanted to point out is when you look at the different thresholds, you can kind of see the higher speed roadways, it's easier to meet that threshold with lower volumes. And that is kind of where that speed factor or that safety factor comes into play. So it's taking into account that proactive safety approach. Looking at controlled intersections, um, that's where we're gonna have, it's a different approach. So it's gonna be based on capacity analysis, crash history, and then your existing lane characteristics, such as if there's already a left turn lane on the opposite approach.
Just, just elaborate on controlled, would these be if it's like a four-way stop or a signalized intersection?
I think the viewers at home would rather hear your voice on that microphone, if we can do that. Maybe you two want to sit at the table, but.
I can stand up. Just, just elaborate on the controlled intersection. That means where the county highway has to actually come to a stop or potentially come to a stop where it's like a four-way stop intersection or a signalized intersection type. So just for clarification.
For right, for right turn lane warrants, it's very similar criteria. So it's based on intersection control, speed, lane configuration again, and then volume thresholds. And once again, this will look at your turning vehicle volumes. And then we did incorporate an ADT threshold into this warrant. So for uncontrolled intersections, very similar process to the left turn lane warrants. You'll utilize these charts. You look at your right turning volume and your main line volume. And then if your point falls in the blue, then it's warranted. So we try to really simplify the process and make it easy for people to use and understand. For controlled intersections such as stop signs or signals, um, that's where you also have to look at your ADT. We used a threshold of 6,000 vehicles per day. This number is based on all of the roadways in Carver County. About a third of them are representative of the 6,000 ADT or higher. So one of the reasons we wanted to incorporate this ADT is we didn't necessarily want to make the thresholds too easy to meet because we don't, we don't wanna just put turn lanes everywhere. We wanna be very strategic about it and optimize the funds we have available. So if the ADT is over 6,000, then you would use this table. This table comes from the Highway Capacity Manual, the most recent edition. If the table, or if the criteria is not met, or if your ADT is less than 6,000, then that would bring you to an engineering study and your safety history and that type of thing. So one of the things to note is that if you have a low speed roadway with less than 6,000 ADT, it's very likely that you will not have a right turn lane be warranted. So getting into some examples, um, this is QuickTrip Victoria Ridge Development on CASA 10, CASA 11. It's an uncontrolled intersection. They provided us the maximum turning volumes. We also look at the forecasted volumes, break that into that hourly, um, volume per lane, like in those charts that we just looked at, take into account speed. And following that flow chart, we see that the left turn and right turn lanes are warranted for both directions.
Whitney, is that QuickTrip public or is that private?
That is private. Right? Oh, it will be public. Oh, yes. Yep.
Will be public when?
I mean, it kind of is now, but it, but in a limited audience, I just wanna be sensitive of.
Yeah.
Commissioner Urdeman and Fahy, uh, the QuickTrip development, it's going through the approval process with the city of Victoria. They're, they're, I think they're through their preliminary or almost final plat.
Good, thanks.
stays at this point. So this, this will be built this, this year yet.
This is another example. This development is High Point Visas. This is on County Road 61. So again, it's an uncontrolled intersection. Currently, they provided us the turning volumes and sometimes they provide the, the volumes in different ways. Sometimes they give us the maximum trips. Um, sometimes they actually break down the, the turning volume. So these, for this one, they did a traffic impact analysis. So we had all of the, the turning volume movements for peak hours. And the warrants are also gonna be based on the maximum volume for peak hours. So if you have an AM peak and a PM peak and the PM peak is higher, then you would use that one. So it's kind of a worst case scenario. We wanna make sure that we are taking a conservative approach. And then again, you take into account your speed, your main line volume, and then that determines if the turn lanes are warranted.
And Whitney, on this example, this is coming up to Chaska Hill.
Yep.
Direct and currently there's a bypass lane on the north side and there is a right-hand turn lane as you come east. So we would change this intersection.
Correct.
And it would still stay uncontrolled.
Yes. So this one in particular is a little bit unique. This is where we actually had them look at the interim solutions as well. I think the full build out, they looked at a signal or a roundabout, but that wasn't triggered in the, in the near future. So the interim solution was to keep it uncontrolled and have turn lanes on both sides. So the bypass lane, that will be removed, or not removed, but it'll be resurfaced into a designated left and right turn lane for both approaches.
So we're gonna put a right turn lane on the north side of this intersection?
Yep, once this development is done. So this development is north of that intersection.
When the development is done to the north of the intersection, because there's not a house there now.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So this just for 10 years down the road that we're ready or?
No, this.
We're gonna make these.
Yeah, it's, it's being built in the next few years.
The development or the intersection?
Development and the intersection.
Well, okay.
Yeah, similar to the, uh.
Hello, everybody. Drew Flummer. I'm the Transportation Planning Manager. So very similar to the Victoria Ridge apartment in QuickTrip. This is also going under development review right now in our office. So it's a very similar stage.
This is another example. This is Westbrook Church on County Road 11. So this is a church, they already actually built their access off of that minor road. Yep. Um, so we wanted to kind of take another look at it and just see how it would compare to the policy that we have in place now. And based on our current policy and their proposed volumes, it would meet left and right turn warrants if we were to apply this policy today.
But with this scenario, correct me if I'm wrong, but we made Westbrook Church pay for that access off of 11.
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Fahy. Uh, yeah, this was before Whitney, but when this church was being proposed, we had their traffic numbers and we were telling them, based on the numbers, you needed to have a left and right turn lane built on Highway 11 at that time. As an alternative, we talked about a driveway access down to Guernsey Avenue, uh, which you can kind of make out on there. I'm not sure if they're fully using it yet, but that was an option that they could put their money towards that instead, instead of putting improvements on County Road 11. So this just reaffirms the stance that we had taken with them at the time. And this is the agreement that we had, uh, with them as well.
Is that a little rail line going through there? What is that line?
That's a boundary.
City boundary or, or potential city boundary there.
Okay.
Darren, just so you know, they're having a pastor change, so you might have some more education on that, Westbrook.
Maybe just add a little bit further. Uh, we, we did get federal funds for Highway 11 to do a project. That'll be, I guess, now built in the summer of 2028. We did, I think, maybe know that at the time as well. So that, we did, in our agreement with them, their, their access that tees right off of Highway 11 will become a right and right out with that project. And they are aware of that. That was in their agreement that we had with them as well at the time. So we bought additional land right away. So we've, we set it up for that project in 2028 already.
Mr. Chair. Maybe Darren or Lyndon, Lyndon has these projects come through. Can you remind me, uh, what level does the board, what, what level does the board see when it comes through the boardroom? I know finances, et cetera. Something like this, I don't recall this coming through the boardroom, this access. It relates to others. I know these are potentially pretty controversial, right?
You're talking about development review?
Development review. And then ultimately, what is the board, do they approve the plat or whatever it's called, the design?
Thank you, Administrator. Uh, this is in the township, so it's under the, um, Carver County Planning and Zoning Authority. So I did go through Jason Milkie's office for approval at that time. So I believe there was a CUP for this one, I believe. So I think that was the mechanism where the county board got involved. There was also a standalone agreement that we had pertaining just to the access itself, laying out the different options that they could choose for improvements to the county highway. So I'll say that's not very typical of us to have a standalone agreement like we did with this one. It just laid out different options and they chose to go with, uh, it, it also involved land acquisition at the same time. So there's a few different things happening, uh, when this church proposal came in, so.
What about like the, the Victoria, the QuickTrip, does that roll through?
So for the other, yeah, thank you. For the other example, like the, the, if I wanna go back to the QuickTrip. So for this QuickTrip one, uh, if a development comes in, it goes through the city of Victoria for this example first. For their concept, preliminary plat and plan and final plat and plan, they do submit that to our office. That goes through Drew, uh, in our office. They evaluate, does it meet our access policy? So that private access policy in particular, as mentioning at the onset of this, uh, work session, does it meet that policy? And if it does, it's kind of a rubber stamp at that point. It doesn't need to come to the board at all. So I would say majority of our cases follow that process or we try to make that follow our access spacing policy that's in our comprehensive plan as well. I guess if there be, there is a departure request for, at least for private access locations, it basically, they can appeal it more or less to other staff in our office that we review it one more time. I think the ultimate outcome, if they still don't like the answer, they could ultimately come to the county board for that. I guess if it's a public access, we try to follow our access spacing and a comprehensive plan or other studies that we've done with the local cities. And it does come out to be some discussion with the local cities as well. Typically, we don't have to bring those to the county board.
Is that laid out in the, in the doc, the, the policy that you're proposing? So I think that's, that's critical that the board is aware of what, what you're proving or not. If somebody, if a developer says, well, I don't like what you guys are telling me, can they go to the board? Do we have that in writing?
Can we mention the development review policy? Or the plat approval authority the county has?
Yeah, in state statute with the preliminary design, so they do have to submit the, if it touches or impacts the county highway, they do have to submit the preliminary plat and plan to the county engineer, I guess, for, for review and, and for comments. There is a mechanism in there where we can provide comments back. I think it's 30 days timeframe, we get the comments back and they do need to try to address them, I guess. So there, there's some back and forth there too. So I guess ultimately, if they don't like what our office is telling them, they could come to the board. I guess, I don't think we've had that happen yet since I've been here.
That's in statute, development plat approval.
For, for this policy, this is just saying, this is how you should design your turn lanes. There is, I guess, a discretionary thing where ultimately Lyndon can make the call if there's something that is outside of this po, policy or this doesn't fit, he can make some exceptions to the rule. I guess ultimately, I suppose if they don't like what any of us are saying, they could come to the county board. But I would hope that we could find a solution before it gets to that level.
You're right, Dave. I think with the expansion of that 10, that could carry a lot of traffic and with a bona fide player like QuickTrip, you might see that explode. And I know that Victoria looks at the world a little different than the county looks at the world. So it's good to see it.
Yeah. And an example related to this area, and we're gonna start a preliminary design on Highway 11 and Highway 10 through this area, through this commercial area. Maybe a rub point, if you wanna even call it that, is Victoria sees it as a huge commercial area for themselves. And we're telling them at a staff level, this access by QuickTrip, that should be your main point in and out of this area. Highway 10 should be used as a secondary one. They're, they're the opposite thinking.
Correct.
That's something that we'll have to work through with the preliminary design work. I guess an example, I, I guess I used recently is, I'm familiar with where Dairy Queen is in Victoria on Highway 5. The city of Victoria has been, had been saying for like probably 10 years, saying they wanted a full access point just east of that intersection of 5 and 11. If you look what they're, they're leading the plans and what they're actually building is simply right off. So that's drastically different than what they were saying even a couple of years ago at the staff level. So I'm hoping we can work through that and it doesn't have to get elevated to the county board level.
That one's being developer driven and that east, you know, cutout, I think you've seen the drawings. Also, we've got promising development at 10 and 43 that'll probably come your way too with access and soil and all that stuff.
So I'll say like all of our policies, this is just setting a framework and guidance, cookie cutter approach. I'm sure if there's, if this policy doesn't fit, Whitney probably get to him some, probably steal a little thunder, but we can always come back and tweak this again. We haven't tweaked the private access policy in two years yet and I don't see a need to at this point, but these are not meant to be set in stone forever either.
Well, I'm wondering if you wanna be clear in your policy that, that, uh, whether there is an appeal process to the board or not.
Sure.
You know, uh, and maybe, maybe the board's comfortable saying no. I mean, or maybe you want, want to see these in the boardroom, like a city council. And they're, they're into the details, right? But that's a much different, different set of approvals.
At, at the city level, it's a good point. They usually are having developer agreements as well. So, but for each development, they have an agreement with them. So they're all coming to their planning and zoning commission. They're all coming to their city council. So we're, we're more of the mindset that here's our, a comprehensive plan is one thing. We have a private access policy. Now we have this one proposed. If it fits within this general framework, we're just gonna make it happen. And you don't have to bother you guys with, I guess, bringing every one of these forward because there is quite a few. But I guess if we're off base and in certain levels we wanna bring to the county board, we sure can.
But I'm not, I, I think the staff's doing a great job. I rarely hear about these things, which is good. I mean, working out solutions. I'm wondering if they're, with the development pressure, if they're, that's gonna change, maybe? And, but I just wanna make sure the board's comfortable with staff making these calls because there is quite a bit of discretion. And I, I would suggest that, leave it at the staff level because of the fact they are doing a good job. I don't think there's a real need to say, well, you can go into the boardroom and open up the Pandora's box, right? But I wanna make sure the board's comfortable with that.
Because right now, if it was in the township, it would go through the planning commission and it would be vetted there. But if it's a city issue like this QuickTrip, cause that's now been annexed, part of Lake Town Township, they did that, that annexation, what, last year, a couple of years ago. So do you, and just to your question, Dave, do you think we're gonna have pushback? For example, if the city of Victoria has this developer that's coming in and said, well, if I have to put a left turn and a right turn on a county highway, that's gonna cost me, say, a million dollars. The development doesn't make sense anymore. It tips over. Are we gonna get that type of pushback? And then ultimately, does that come then through you guys? And then the developer is big enough and says, well, no, I want the county board to address if we need a left turn or a right turn.
I'll say for, we'll just keep using this example on the screen. We did do a corridor study on Highway 10 and 11 back in 2000, I think we finished, or 2020, sorry, we finished up during COVID. Their, their access points and everything they're showing here is almost verbatim per that corridor study. Hardly, hardly any questions. There's always a little rub, do we really need to do a turn lane or things like that? At least with QuickTrip, it's just like, yeah, whatever it takes to get the doors open has been their mentality, it seems like. So must be some money to be made there. So that does come into play. I think one that comes to mind is, uh, Kirsch's, if you have them on the east side of Waconia, where Future 92 is gonna go through. They're, they're all, I, I guess, wanting to have a lot of the details figured out because developers are gonna wanna know where their access points are being, what they gotta actually build. There's some other examples too. Little Avenue, uh, just south of 10, I think southeast side of Waconia. The owner himself, I think the developers didn't maybe wanna pay him as much as he's hoping, I think, because the future county road is gonna cut through his property and there's gonna be some cost there. So it does come into play. I think the more we can do these corridor studies, to lay it out upfront, has really helped prospective developers know what they're, they're getting into. I think this is a very big success story, I think, having a corridor study done.
Yeah, we'll do an agreement with the city as necessary, as said, set the stage so it doesn't get to that point with the development.
Yeah, and I think all of that type of decision should be handled by the staff. But you guys do the work. You know the end. Yeah, and I think all of that type of decision should be handled by the staff. But you guys do the work. You know the end and the outset of it.
And Whitney's gonna have an example of a rule development too, that, so I'll let her maybe show that and we can elaborate more on this if you want.
Hey, one more question.
The clause in the policy, again, like we did on the private access policy, about the authority, if there's an appeal or whatever that comes up, we'll take a look at that now.
One more question. Are we anywhere close to have a conversation on turnback on ten? Or is that gonna stay our road for a long time? Because if they develop that whole thing and it's all Victoria, is there any reason for us to have that be a county road? Sorry, eleven. I'm sorry, eleven. I said ten, eleven.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no. We, that's, we're gonna keep that. Yeah, for sure. Major north, north-south road for us.
This is that example of the rural subdivision that Darren mentioned. Um, so typically for ten residential homes, that equates to about a hundred trips per day. That includes entering and exiting. So entering, um, it would be about fifty entering trips per day. And then for your peak hour, you assume ten percent. So the breakdown is two left turns, two right turns, and that does not meet our warrants. A minimum of five turning vehicles per hour would be the threshold for this speed and this ADT to meet warrants. Now, this is where during the traffic analysis, they would look at traffic patterns. Um, so this is assuming it's fifty, fifty split east and west of people entering the site. But if everybody's coming from one direction and you have all five of these vehicles coming in and during the peak hour, then it would meet peak hour, uh, warrant thresholds. So there's a lot of, again, there's a lot of factors that go into all of these warrants. Um, it's all usually part of the traffic operations, um, and traffic patterns as well.
But just Whitney, in this example, the access to this is off County Road fifty. This is south of Carver. And, uh, that's County Road eleven. There's not gonna be any access to there because, or will there be an access to County Road eleven? Because when this came through the planning commission, I don't recall that we approved access to County Road eleven.
Nope, no access to eleven. This access is already existing off of fifty. So this was just a, a pre-existing site that we just wanted to apply our current policy to and just see how it would differ than what's out there already.
Commissioner Faye, so th- this is a ten-lot subdivision that happened in, in the township. I forget, is this Dogren Township, I believe? Um, so this already happens. Um, I don't know if they've even built any homes yet on here, but it's ten lots. This is saying they could build what they built and didn't have to do turn lanes. Say this was at maybe double that, twenty, twenty lots, twenty homes. It may likely would trigger the need for turn lanes. So again, this is, would go through the, your planning and zoning commission at the county level and then to the county board. This is where you may get some pushback if they really want to do double this size, but it's gonna trigger half a million dollars or more of turn lane improvements on the county highway. So this is the example where it skates by. I, I think the property owners are gonna need to know our policy, to know the threshold of how big a development they could do before it's gonna trigger improvement. So first they gotta get through, can they get an access and where can it be on a county highway? So they check through that here. And this is saying they don't have to do turn lanes with the size of the development they have.
Any other questions about the turn lane warrants before we get into the design? Okay, so the next part of the policy is the turn lane length design. There are three main components that go into a turn lane design. Taper length, deceleration length, and storage length. So the taper length and deceleration length, that's where the vehicles have the space to slow down to the speed that they need to speed. And then the storage length is the acquired space for queuing, for vehicles waiting to turn. So similar to the warrants, uh, these are split out based on control. So for an uncontrolled approach, um, we have this series of right turn and left turn design criteria. The tapers are, um, we made three assumptions, one for constrained environments, one for low-speed highways, which would be anything forty-five miles per hour or lower, and then one to fifteen rates for high-speed highways, so fifty miles per hour and over. So there's three main criteria you see in these recommended turn lane lengths. That's speed, ADT. So again, we're using that six thousand ADT threshold and then your percentage of heavy vehicles. There is some assumption built into these recommended lengths. Um, deceleration is the main one. So for left turn lanes, we assume that all the vehicles utilizing the left turn lane are going to be decelerating to zero miles per hour. So they're fully stopping and we want to make sure we give them that full maximum space that they need to slow down and not hit the vehicle that's already waiting to turn. For right turn deceleration, we're assuming fifteen miles per hour. So we're not assuming that they have to completely stop. They will be slowing down slow enough to, to maneuver that turn, but we don't need to provide them that full deceleration of fifty-five or fifty miles per hour, whatever that starting speed is to the full zero. Um, so that kind of helps us scale our turn lane, so we don't need to have six hundred, five hundred feet turn lane lengths everywhere in the county. Um, for storage, this is where the percentage of trucks come in. So on roadways that have less than ten percent trucks in their turning volumes, um, the minimum requirement is fifty feet and that's equivalent to about two passenger cars. And then for turn lanes that have ten percent trucks or higher, um, we would require a minimum of a hundred feet.
Do we have any current intersections that are not meeting that storage requirement? Just with the growth that we've gotten bigger intersections now and since the storage isn't, say, there's four trucks there and they're backing up into the existing roadway, is that happening in some of our intersections? I'm trying to visually think.
County Road ten east to south one eleven.
Which intersection?
County Road ten east to south bound eleven.
Turning into Fleet Farm to get on.
I just turned off County Road ten to go south towards Fleet Farm.
Yeah, towards Fleet Farm.
You wanna revisit County Road eleven, uh? No, I don't do that.
I guess nothing, nothing's jumping at us about right turn lanes being an issue of queuing back that far. I'm sure during peak times, likely as possible. Um, we're just gonna assume that for the most part, this is for uncontrolled, so if you're on Highway, Highway ten at like a township road, you can just freely keep going. I mean, the odds of you having to stop for someone to make a right turn are zilch almost, I guess. I mean, someone could make that maneuver and just come to a stop before they turn. But for the most part, we're assuming it's free flow. Um, if you're at a signalized intersection or a stop, full four-way stop, we're gonna look at the operations analysis anyway. So that's a different discussion than these uncontrolled.
Yep, so this is the controlled approach. So for this one, the deceleration is assumed to be zero for both left and right turns. So we have to provide that full deceleration length. Um, the storage for controlled intersections is also slightly different. So we still have that fifty-foot minimum for less than ten percent trucks, a hundred feet minimum for ten percent trucks or higher. But then we also require them to look at the ninety-five percent queuing distance and then the average queue distance of the adjacent through lane. So you want to make sure if you have all of your vehicles waiting in the left turn lane, they're not blocking that through lane from operating efficiently. Um, so there's four factors for storage that are required to be looked at for controlled intersections and then they would use the highest value.
I'm assuming, Whitney, that just all the math works from everything that we're seeing here. It's just based on volumes and traffic and so the math works.
Yep. So this is an example of the recommended turn lane lengths for the Mueller pit. So we have their, their uncontrolled access. Um, we know that their volume of trucks per hour entering the site is more than five. So that meets that threshold of the turn lane being warranted. And then we take into account the speed and the trucking percentage to determine what the recommended turn length should be. So you can see in this table, the ones shown in that orange color, that's the existing turn lanes that are out there already. And the ones shown in green are what we would recommend, based on our policy. Um, so one thing I want to point out as well is this policy, everything outlined in here is sort of the starting point. Um, design is kind of an iterative process. And so these recommended lengths, if you have factors such as, um, vertical hills or curvature, like you can see here to the west, it curves, some, there are gonna have to be some modifications during design that have to be made to make this design feasible. So for example, they, the existing turn lanes eastbound, they have slightly less tapers. Ours, our recommendation is longer based on our policy, but in reality, it would likely have to be reduced a little bit too, to fit that taper within that horizontal curve.
What is an estimated cost now to fix this uncontrolled intersection to our new policy? Because we gotta make those turn lanes longer.
I don't know that we would require them to fix it right now. It would be moving forward. So if they were to propose a change to this access, that's when we would have to implement the new policy or if there's a, a new access down the line somewhere else. But we wouldn't go back right now and make them change it.
But it would be driven by the Mueller pit if they wanted to. Is that the factor or do we drive the factor? Because if we have fifteen trucks sitting in that storage, they're going westbound and there's fifteen trucks there waiting to take a right-hand turn as it backs up further towards the fire department in Carver. Because I've seen a lot of trucks sitting in there in the queue. And so ultimately, what happens? If there's an accident and then do we say, oh, here's the new policy, Mueller pit, you gotta expand? Or do we make a decision and put it in a plan that by twenty twenty-eight, we're gonna improve this intersection?
Commissioner Faye, for this segment, we do have a future project planned at, at some point in the future to make this into a four-lane facility or keep, continue the four-lane further south. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't touch it as an agency until we reconstructed it. That was one of the project categories that this would be triggered for. So unless, unless there's a safety issue here, that would be another reason that we'd go get some safety funding, HSA funding or something like that to actually make an improvement on our end that we felt we needed to do. I doubt we would push Mueller's to do anything unless they're changing the volume that they had originally had approved for their site. Um, I'm not, I, I guess I don't know the history if that was through the county first or, I think this is in the county. So if they change their IUP or if their, their usage goes beyond their approved IUP, that would be a reason for us. That'd be an avenue for us for to say, hey, now you gotta make these improvements, so.
Because that Carver's future plans, like you mentioned Darren, to a mile to the southwest with that new big development going in there, there's just gonna be a lot more traffic going past that pit entrance.
Correct, correct. And in that situation, our traffic need, need on our highway may need, require us to expand the highway. And then we, we would update everything at that point to our current lease standards, I guess, at that point.
This is another example of the Lundquist pit. So same approach. Um, they provided their turning volumes per day. We broke that down into hourly volumes. Um, based on the speed, truck percentages, if we were to apply this policy today, both left turn and right turn lanes would be warranted. And again, this table shows, um, they currently don't have an existing right turn. So we would require them, um, if we were to apply it today, that they would have to put one in and it should be three hundred and sixty feet in length.
I'm really surprised that there hasn't been any intercept or accidents at this, when the trucks are hauling full tilt. Because they're just, I've had a few phone calls and then fortunately, there hasn't been any accidents. People are definitely cruising when they get, as they go south, when they're coming up to that pit.
Um, so another example of the Hanson pit, um, they provided their trucking volumes. They said it would never be higher than a maximum of thirty turns per day or per hour, excuse me. Um, so analyzing this, assuming they're all coming from one direction or the other, uh, we looked at thirty vehicles from the, from the north or thirty vehicles from the south and it would meet warrants based on the information they provided. And currently, there are no existing turn lanes out there.
And Whitney, that max thirty trucks entering per hour one way, that's in their CUP?
That is, yep.
With the township?
Yeah. Because there was discussion, just to go back, there was discussion that they were gonna build a new entrance on the north end of that pit. Has that gone anywhere else? No. Because of the neighborhood was complaining so much about the Jake braking, going down that hill, slowing down to make the right-hand turn.
Can't say Jake braking, gotta say engine braking. Jake, Jacobson Company doesn't like that. Right? They got rid of all the Jake braking signs. Threat of lawsuit.
This is the last example. So this is that High Point Vista's development, uh, that we discussed earlier. So this intersection, once the development is built, the intersection would be fully built out. So it would have access on the north and the south. Um, based on the warrants, they would have left and right turn lane warrants met. Um, so right now, as you mentioned, it's a T-intersection. There's only one existing right-bound turn lane or eastbound right turn lane. Um, so we would require turn lanes on both the eastbound and the westbound approaches and those are the recommended lengths.
Why is the speed different there, Whitney?
So there's a horizontal curve. Um, and the design speed for that curve is forty-five miles per hour. So in order to fit the curve, um, constraints and the turn lanes in there, and there's a, so this is the main intersection into the development, but there, there is a secondary access to the east and we are having them do right-in, right-out on that one, I believe. Did I get that right or not? Okay. Um, so in order to fit all of the turn lanes within the constraints given, it made sense to design this for forty-five miles per hour since that's what the, the design curve is as well of the road.
Because currently the poster is fifty.
Yes. So MINDOT, um, sets all of the posted speed limits and sometimes that's even higher than what the design speed is of the road. Interesting fact.
If you, do, do you drive on your way out of here, I don't think we even have a curb advisory sign or it's just five miles or different. Definitely driving faster.
Yeah, faster than fifty here.
Yeah. Any other questions about the turn lane length design before we talk about left turn offset?
It's fun to get excited by road storage and AADT and I'd like to see the copy of the Highway Capacity Manual Seventh Edition. I've just finished the Sixth.
You wanna look at the MINDOT facility design guide?
Uh, next week.
You know, I'm having trouble sleeping, so could you get that to me?
It beats counting sheep.
I have all the interesting parts highlighted for you guys.
And that's why you're doing this. Thank you.
I'm starting to wonder about Whitney.
We need more Whitney's in the world so we don't have to worry about this.
So there's three types of offset. There is no offset, which would be zero offset, negative offset or positive offset when it comes to left turn lanes. And it's all in relation to how those turn lanes line up to each other. Um, so I'm sure you've all been to intersections where it's either uncontrolled or a flashing yellow arrow where you're waiting to turn left and the vehicles from the other direction are blocking your line of sight. That's what we're trying to improve. And this is actually consistent with MINDOTS. Um, they're starting an initiative to improve left turn offset as well. Um, so this is definitely in line with their efforts to do that. Um, so there's a few factors that have to be taken into account. So there are left turn lane sight distance. Um, there's the amount of pedestrian activity in the roadway and right-of-way constraints and crash history as well. So all of those factors will come into play when the left turn offset is being evaluated. We put together two recommendation tables. Um, so this takes into account your volumes of heavy vehicles that are in your left-turning volume and then the number of lanes that have to be crossed. This comes from the federal, or the Ashtoe Green Book. And so what we would require is when there's left turn lanes that are opposing each other, we would require them to analyze the sight distance and make sure that it at least meets this distance. And if it doesn't, um, then see if they can improve that positive offset in order to meet these minimum requirements. So this is an example of what a positive offset would layout, layout would look like. Um, so ideally, we would have them at least meet a minimum of six feet offset and that would be about three feet in each direction for both left turn lanes. So yes, ideally, this is what it would look like with positive offset.
So the consequence of this is the intersections are gonna get a little wider. You're gonna have that striped area in the middle. You're going to have that striped area in the middle. The offset. This one will get some comments probably from the cities.
We need more land, that's why.
They have one of those at Lyman and Audubon.
If we can, we should use the positive offset because it, the regular offset, when you're right across the road from someone, is very similar to Minnesota nice where you come up to a four-way stop and everyone's waving everyone else to go and no one goes. So it's about the same thing. So this way, you actually don't see that person in your vision and then you actually turn.
Correct.
So they can't really see.
Yeah, and with this positive offset, does that include to have those flashing yellow arrows?
So this would be for any uncontrolled intersections and then the flashing yellow arrow intersections as well.
And the reason I ask that question, Whitney, because at two-twelve reform and Quick Trip is, sat in a meeting and even MINDOT said that the flashing yellow arrow thing confuses people. And they're not really, most accidents happen during a flashing yellow arrow.
Really?
Yeah.
Sure. So there's been a lot of research done on the safety benefits of flashing yellow arrows. And bear with me, I've got a bit of a cold hanging around. But where this really becomes a problem, like in the two-twelve example, is when you introduce a median because most of the research that's been done has been in sort of mediumless, undivided roads. So that median really introduces sort of a forced negative offset. And so we're trying to explore options to correct that. So in a, in a more constrained environment where you don't have six or eight or ten feet of median, it's much less of a problem.
An example, real life examples, if you're driving Highway ten from La Coruña to Chaska, for example, at some of those township intersections, it may get pretty wide. To get our visual sightline there, where we have a concrete median, that's going to add about another eight to ten feet of width. So it does, it's going to get wider in cities. Like Minnesota's cities might have a little pushback there, but we'll see what they have for comments.
And then those types of improvements would be obviously planned improvements if we're going to, for example, improve every intersection on County Road ten, for example. That's a huge project and a cost factor.
Yeah, I guess one, one other point is that this really comes into play for those permissive left turns. With the flashing arrow, if you have a dedicated left turn signal base, it's also a blessing.
What's Judith's saying is if you don't have the flashing yellow arrow and it's just a red or green, red or green light that you're going to take a left, you wouldn't have to worry about this left turn.
Because you're not trying to ensure.
You're not trying to.
Right.
So next steps, we'll incorporate any comments from this work session. We plan to then share this policy with cities and townships. And then we'll be presenting this to the board for adoption in June. So any other questions?
When's the township meeting? Is that township association meeting altogether or?
You're doing them separately.
Just separately.
Just sending it out to them as well.
Oh, you're sending a memo rather than meeting in person?
I don't even know when that one is. When's the next one? July?
Yeah, sixteenth, my son's birthday, that's why I remember.
Does it make sense to push this to, is there any urgent with it?
No, I was going to say, if you feel that's important, we could wait until after that, either and, or meeting in July. Association meeting.
It might be nice to give this a little bit more airtime.
And then we could have Whitney, we could introduce her to all the township people so she could teach them about turn lane offsets.
There's so much, yes, I think.
You can start your speech with, now looking here.
They would love you, Whitney.
Maybe they're just counting the state with adequate storage.
Yes, enough with the storage thing.
Well, these do get expensive. And so that's what Administrator Hemsey would be, I mean, that's, that's the bark back that would go, holy, you know what, we, you know, it's not cheap. I remember it used to be a hundred thousand dollar bill. Oh, you got to build a turn lane, a hundred thousand dollar, that sounded like a lot of money back then. You know, you're a half millions now and, and.
How much is a street stop right now?
Mueller, they can build their own, can't they?
Four hundred grand for a stoplight.
I still don't know what you did on Powers Boulevard at West Seventy-Eighth in Chanhassen, but it continues, there's always something going on there, but.
There's always something going on everywhere.
To be better, I guess, but.
I, I do like the idea of giving this a little bit more time. Is with the cities, what would you, it sounds like you're going to have some sort of a communication go out. Would you follow up with a meeting or a city council kind of update? Yeah, get up there, Darren.
So I guess for next steps, the cities, we would initiate, send us out to the city engineers and the city planning staff as well.
Oh, yeah.
And just say, give you a deadline, send us back your comments. If we need to, we'll go have a sit-down meeting with them or a virtual meeting if we need to talk through something in more detail, so. We weren't, I guess, I don't think we're planning having a group session discussion at this point, but just getting each city's comments at this point.
Right, yeah, it's obviously just focusing with a planning group, yeah.
We can be flexible too, so it's, we'll see what comments we get back, if any, I guess, at this point.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see what kind of feedback you get and on this.
Dave, when's the next administrators' meeting?
Coming up here pretty quick, I'll bring it up.
And maybe just talk with Jason Milkie because he's done so many of these code changes into the townships. And sometimes that goes very well. Sometimes the commissioners in those townships get a lot, a lot of calls. And then we ask Jason Milkie to go out after the fact and by then, all the confusion and misinformation.
Anything we can do to be proactive on communicating around this would be hugely helpful.
Yeah, this is, there's a bugaboo in here somewhere that's going to pop out like Alien, movie Alien. I know it. So glad you guys are taking care of it.
At least, at least we hope you're armed with some information. You under, maybe heard the term left, left turn lane offset now. Maybe what that kind of means, but.
I do, I do know people who, who will go great lengths to avoid unprotected left, left turns. So I'm not one of them yet.
If you have any detailed questions, feel free to reach out to Whitney direct or you can send the linen or myself to, we can get it to her.
So I recently had a pretty wild situation in, I was not the left turner. I was in the lane right next to the left turner, so two forward lanes, two left lanes. So I'm, I'm thinking these offsets are a good idea, albeit expensive. The habit of the individual in the right lane of the lefts to first make a move right like they're driving a semi-truck, I see it all the time. And this vehicle was halfway into my lane and I had to take not only evasive action to lock up my brakes. I happened to be driving a very big vehicle. And it's, it's remarkable how often I see, I'm assuming, and I don't know that anybody has an answer for why somebody would do that. But it would seem the offset would fix that problem because I see it all the time. I'm going left, so I'm going to go right first is bizarre. I don't, I don't get it. Anybody else seen that?
That's one of the many problems with dual left turn lanes. Oftentimes, people get in the habit of, from that outside turn lane, swinging wide because people.
To avoid.
Will swing wide. So you've got kind of a chain reaction of people moving into lanes they shouldn't be in at any given moment.
Yes, but as a driver, you can do that simply by going straight from your turn lane and watching the person on your left and just take a white arc.
Bizarre.
Maybe we need advanced driver training.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you all. We are adjourned.